Good afternoon, I'm gonna call the school board of Citrus County's regular school board meeting to order. And with that, we apologize, we had a couple of executive and a shade session for SAGI and security, and so that just delayed us briefly, so we are getting started a couple minutes later. With that, we will go ahead and turn over our opening exercises to the Honorable Linda P. Howard.
I feel very fortunate today, I invited someone that I've known for a very long time, who's a student in our school system, and that he has a brother and sister who's also a student. His sister did some work with speech and language, we're a company that work with the school system, so we've had a very long history. And one thing about John, his name is John Powers, no relation to me whatsoever, one thing about John was, when you say an honest person, John is an honest person. When he was a little person, I'll tell a story about a little person over at the house, and he was playing, he was on top of the roof of the stable, and when John had a hammer, and he was pounding the roof of the stable. And I said, "John, what are you doing?" He said, "Making the hole in the roof." Okay. He's just one of those honest people. John has met some challenges in his life, he's overcome those challenges, and he's going to share with us today a few of the things that he experienced, how he's overcome, what he's doing today, and I think he'll provide a very good example for many of our children who are facing the same type of situation. So with that, I'll ask John to come up, and if I might, we'll do the pledge of allegiance after John speaks for a little while.
Hello. Thank you, I want to thank you guys, I want to thank all of you guys that volunteer, all the time that you guys spend. I know, you know, in some ways it's a job, but it's a lot more than a job, and that's where I had people like Ms. Linda really helped. When I was a kid, my parents couldn't figure out why I was doing so bad in school, and this was, I think, in third, second grade, third grade, right in there. So some of this, I don't remember, I actually had to call my mom on the way, and was kind of like, you know, "Hey, what was wrong with me? Learning disabilities?" So I had a couple, but Ms. Linda really helped, helped us find out what was going on, get us the proper testing. Ms. Whitmire, who I forgot all about, my mom said, really fought for me, and I think that was fourth grade, because they put me in a class with troubled kids that were just in trouble attitude-wise, not learning disability, and she fought to get me, and she's like, "No, he's not like that, he needs to be in this class." So, you know, she, they really fed into me with love, and then I ran into Coach Roland. A lot of us probably remember Coach Roland. Coach Roland fed into me with the paddle. But Coach, you know, Coach Roland, you know, it was when I played football and basketball in like seventh grade, eighth grade, and he, he would take his lunch with me, quiz me on tests, he would take us home, and there was quite a few of us that he would take home, and I'll never forget, I mean, I hope this is okay, well, he just passed unfortunately, but he would take us home around his table and quiz us, his wife would quiz us, as he walked around the table with his paddle on his back, tapping his paddle, and if you missed a question, you stood up and he would just give you a little, just a little love pat. But I tell you what, that year, I went from like a D student to an AB student. I mean, I got all kind of like most improved, I mean, all kinds of rewards and stuff, so it was, you know, it was like you're mad at anybody, but in the same sense, he really showed me I wasn't done, that, you know, I just had to apply myself, and I just had to, you know, and learn the right way, you know, that makes a big difference too, on how you learn and stuff. So again, thank you guys, thanks to teachers, for what you guys do, it's awesome. Later on in my years, I got into a lot of trouble partying, I remember making the tennis team, I don't know if you remember this, I don't even know if I should share this stuff. I remember making the tennis team, and my dad, my dad was so happy, but I remember Coach Dodd said something about, "If I catch you guys at a party, you're running." And I was like, "Oh, I'm out." Because he called me at quite a few parties. But, you know, again, you know, I thank you guys for, you know, showing us, showing me that, you know, that it was, it was just how you learn, what you need to do to learn, because now, I mean, now, I own my own business, we're going on 13 years, I got four guys in the field, two guys in the office, or two girls in the office, I'm a pastor at a church, we just, we started a church in Hernando, going about six months now, you know, and so, even though I had those learning disabilities, and I got in trouble with, you know, a lot of the partying and all that stuff that I shouldn't do, you know, there's, there's always hope, there's always hope, and, you know, like the old Bible verse, you train them the way they're supposed to be, they'll come back, they never forget it, you know. So if it's okay, I'm gonna pray for you guys, or pray for the schools, and then Michael's gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance, if y'all would bow your heads. Father God, we just come to you, and I just thank you, Lord, I thank you for the work that they do. Lord, I pray blessings over them, I pray a spirit of excellence over them, Lord. I pray protection over every single school in Citrus County, I pray protection over our officers that are guarding it, I pray that you give them wisdom and clarity to see anything that's out of the ordinary, Father God. Lord, we just thank you and we love you for everything that you do for us, amen.
Who do you stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you guys.
Thank you, John, thank you so much. If you could see, why, I guess 25 years ago or something, I saw him, I was like, "This kid is good, this kid is positive, he's a happy person." Thanks so much.
Hey, John, come on high.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. Did you have anything before I turned back over?
No, I was just, you have to ask, you need to, this is, you know, you have a lot of gifts, and you have a lot of gifts in yourself, so you can decide, oh, wait, I'll stop going down that path when I'm ready, I'll do it.
And I know both as a parent now, with kids in the school system, as well as he's, he has foster kids, and, you know, done a lot, and does, continues to do a lot for our schools and the community, so, and he has a sister-in-law in this room, and that is Ms. Swain, and...
I'm glad he didn't tell any stories.
I'm sure your sister's going, "What did he say?"
She'll be texting.
So we do appreciate John's, thank you, Ms. Powers, for bringing that. We are gonna adopt the consent agenda, but was there anything, was this, what was this? The surplus was...
It's not on, it's said it's been...
Okay, so...
At least we took the adoption of the, you just got it.
Okay, okay, so it's not been pulled, we just, it was just supplemental information?
No, we had to make an adjustment, so it's been pulled, but we had to make an adjustment to the surplus.
Oh, I'm sorry, but I mean, it's already on, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't have to make it. So we just need to then adopt the agendas recommended by the superintendent?
Sure.
Second, have a motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Mr. Dodd, to adopt the agenda that's recommended by the superintendent. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. Citizens' comments, any bringing cards?
Sure.
We'll have another opportunity at 5:15 and at the end of business. Approve the consent agenda.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dodd, second by Ms. Counts, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries five zero. And then if you could read the recemissions.
Yes. Approve the $1,000 donation to Citrus High School for sexual maintenance and well-being, and approve the $3,000 donation to Christopher High School for encouraging movement for a total of four thousand dollars.
Thank you, and we thank our community service, they have just continued to be very generous to us, we thank all of you. We're moving on then to human resources, Ms. Swain.
Good afternoon, I ask the board's approval of the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the golden rod.
Approve of the school board instructional and support personnel as on the golden rod.
Motion by Ms. Counts, second by Ms. Powers, to approve the instructional and support recommendations. Any questions, comments?
John, welcome. I'd like to list a main appointment.
Me too.
Very good.
Yeah.
We have a few more, yes.
How many more do we have?
We have about 40 openings right now, for instructional, and about 23, 24 for support.
And with that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good evening.
I was telling you, man, when I was over at the village, I mentioned Sunday, we were going into education, there was a lot of them all over the Citrus County.
Yes, ma'am, you do that.
That's a good place to go to do some approving, if people would, like, have an idea about teaching, or if John, or the general, if he just gets to learn, you know, they really want to be a teacher.
We will look into that, absolutely, thank you.
Okay, moving on to, I've had insurance information, I know how excited Ms. Androski and Mr. Fletcher are to share with us.
Good afternoon. Mr. Kennedy's correct, we are excited. This is something that we have been actually investigating for the previous year. We wanted to present this information to you, and Mr. Fletcher's handing out a flyer. We have actually researched several different companies that offer parents the ability to purchase iPad insurance on a yearly basis for their iPad. And after careful deliberation, deliberation, we feel this company offers the best option for parents. It's for $29 a year, $29.95, and they purchase that through the, the parent purchases it through a portal, and it's an agreement between the parent and the company, so we would just merely be offering this service to parents. Then if they purchase it, there is your deductible, they can have unlimited claims, so it covers things such as the cracked screen, the, if the charging port is damaged, if there's mechanical failure, it also covers if it's stolen, it will pay the price for the iPad, so instead of the student having to come up with the money to replace the iPad, the insurance company would offer that, would pay that to the school. So as a parent that was paid for a cracked screen, I appreciate that we would be able to offer this, it would not be mandatory, of course, it would be something that we would set up for the parent, and they could sign up, and they could purchase it if they are interested in doing so, and I know through the years, we have had numerous parents asking if there was insurance that they could purchase for the iPad, and $29 is a significant savings. If a screen is cracked once, it's a $90 bill to repair that. So even if it's lost, they can file a claim, and then it would take care of that. Do you have anything else to add?
I mean, you can see everything that it, sorry, you can see everything that it covers. There isn't much that they would be able to get, take care of with this insurance, it seemed pretty impressive.
It is impressive, are you willing to do this?
I think it's a, you could pay the $30 for your child, and then at the end of the year, if something happened, give them the $30, like a $60 investment for a child to repair.
This is a parenting moment by...
I'm sorry. And a bookkeeping nightmare.
No, 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 no.
No, no, she's saying this application.
This is, this is...
That's not a, that's not a bad idea, Ms. Bryant, instead of parenting your children like I did with mine, and then I was the one to actually cause the damage, no, that's a good idea, if you, yes, okay.
Just keep in mind, we're not entering any agreement with anybody, we're making, we've been asked by parents to provide.
And we've done that.
We just were provided, and so what we've done is researched what we consider to be the best option out there for parents that, you know, make no representation for, that is a contract between the parent and the insurance company, we're just letting them, giving them what they want to pay. We just want the iPad back, or the money to repair it, that's all we do.
So the hand, the money would be exchanged between the parent and the company on that portal, we would not be involved with collecting the money or anything?
I've got a question, so if it's lost, then we replace it, how do you ensure that that's gonna be back to the inventory, it was gonna be taken out, is that the number we put, so they would have to replace it with the exact same loss, in a contract, either that, or they would replace it with a different money for the device?
And then we could purchase or replace it.
We'd have to pay the money for us to replace it, so here, yes.
We, we hold the student responsible for the iPad or the cost of the iPad, so if it's lost, then they owe us the cost of the iPad, we'll determine that. So if the company gave the parent a check for $300, and the parent turns out to be asking them for $100, that's, happens between them and the company, it's their business, we just want the $300 from the parent for the iPad. We're just giving them other options, they need that themselves, they can put $30 out. Kathy's right, we've been asked this since the day we loaned out the first iPad, isn't there any kind of insurance program we can buy relatively inexpensive to protect this, because parents understand, those schools occasionally will profit.
It might just be tempted to do it, but if they knew they were gonna make money for keeping it together.
So it's simply, we just, simply like Mr. Bradshaw said, for informational purposes, we want to make you aware of what, of what we were able to find, and let parents be made aware that this is an option, certainly still a range between them and the company, and we're just setting a different rate not to be on the $300 for the issue itself.
Do you have any questions?
Ms. Counts, please.
Well, I'm just looking at our next item, and this, a whole page of broken, outdated, useful parts and stuff like that, so have we been paid for all these broken ones that we're about to trade with, or surplus?
So what happens there is sometimes those iPads or devices, the cost of the repair is greater than the value of the ion, and so then in that case, we surplus it. Sometimes it also is the fact that due to the age, it just cannot be repaired anymore, and so then we surplus that.
Would this, how would this insurance company?
Well, if it's, if it's ours and it's just outdated, it's not gonna happen to wear.
Okay, right, if it's, if it's broken?
We don't charge students because they have an iPad too, and they'll only download its apps, because that's just outdated.
Yeah.
So they would be charged if they dropped it, broke the screen, or if they dropped it in water, and the device taxes, they would pay for the damage, not the cost of the money.
Okay, okay, because this is, this, this surplus stuff comes in broken, and I just wanted to clarify.
Broken. Some of this, we may have recuperated the cost of the screen, and we may have recuperated some of the expense, some of it may just be because of the age of the devices being surplus, because it's no longer valued, it's no longer...
The cost, and I, I understand when we moved iPads in, I heard a lot of discussion about, "I don't want my kid to have an iPad, because I don't want to be responsible for it," so this offering them something like this?
Yeah, when you reduce that to $30, that's less than they can be responsible for the price of the textbook, if they lost the textbook.
And they're under no obligation to pay the insurance, but you're under an obligation to pay if the child breaks it or loses it.
That's correct.
Okay, so up to then, we just have to say we are offering it.
It's just a service, we just try to...
And a lot of the numbers, and I know we'll talk about in a second, a lot of the items on the, on the disposal surplus list are actually Dell items, and, yeah, and actually quite a few of them are from the Academy of the Criminal Science, they're not, they're not ours. So, but just because they're not iPads, which are that, that's what, got it, yeah, that's, it's just, and unfortunately, that's not, it's not within ours. Couple, just what questions I have, because I love this, I know Ms. Androski, you from the iPad pilot on, you have looked for a product which I think, I want to say it's six or seven years, you've been working in some form on this, so I appreciate you bringing this forward. So we are not the facilitators, is what I understand, all we're really doing is handing them information, we're providing maybe a link?
We provide a link, and then if they're interested, the parent clicks, they go into the storefront, and then they sign the contract with them, and make them pay it to the company directly.
Is there, is in any way are we gonna be able to know that, okay, of the X number of deployed iPads, X number percentage is insured, so that we, we know that they have 1,000 insured, and we maybe deploy, you know, 3,000?
Yes, we actually, we have a way to, we have an account that we can go in and log in and see which iPads have insurance, and then we can help facilitate with the student and give them a loaner, so we know that you have a insurance plan, and you're gonna send your iPad off for repair, so while that's being repaired, here's a loaner, and we can monitor which iPads have the insurance purchase for them, and which ones do not, yes.
Good, because that was my thing, is to make sure you guys weren't out of the loop on something that we were gonna have. And then I know, you know, you guys are trying to get this to us as quickly as we can, and just, open house nights didn't entirely overlap, but we still have some opportunities, and so is there a way we're gonna be able to articulate some of that in multiple forms so that parents, because I know I for one gonna get the insurance for my child, and I know this is silly, but it's a fair question, what about teachers? If they wanted to, to get it, because, you know, teachers could be in the same situation as students.
Sometimes Linda would do it to students too, you know?
Well, I hadn't thought about that, that's... And you don't have to, that was just, you know, it was just more of a...
We, we did talk about that, you know, especially, again, I go back to, I've already paid $100 one time myself, and so I, we both said, "Well, I would buy it for myself, just to..."
Yeah, I mean, I...
$30 is better than...
Peace of mind for me, it's just...
Peace of mind, but, right, generally, we do, we take care of the teacher device.
And, and I would also just say, the, the new covers, I like them a lot, I, I don't know that people realize they actually are very effective, they just kind of look, because they're so sleek, they look like they maybe aren't as effective, and from what I can tell from the data, they actually are sometimes more effective than some of the other versions we've had, so...
Correct, the Otterbox gave the illusion that because it had the shield that rested on top, that it added an additional barrier, but, well, one, a cover's only gonna be as good as if you place it on there, and so they, they more often were on the backside and not on the front side, but they, the four edges cracked easily and broken, and it wouldn't stay on the device, so, no, we're, we have not seen that this version is, is not, it's holding up well, we haven't, do I have any reason to believe that it's not holding up as well as the Otterbox?
Mr. Brown?
Yes, we are in agreement, though, that if a parent buys the insurance, and the iPad is lost, the money that the insurance company's gonna pay for the iPad is what we're gonna accept as a replacement, right?
Correct.
Because I don't, because we're paying more than $300 for an iPad.
We pay $290, it was $294, but I noticed on the site, it's $295, the case is $35, so it comes to about $329 with the case.
So, but if they would depreciate, let's say it's a, a year-old iPad, we would, we will take that, right, from, so if they say, "We're only gonna value that iPad that was lost to only $225," and they send the parent a check for $225, we're gonna accept that as payment for that price, right?
Yes.
Because we've always been depreciating it, because it's a, you know, a year-old iPad, we depreciate it, I will charge it the cost of the price. So in some ways, we're gonna agree to what this insurance company values that you did ask, and we're gonna accept that of our, our school system.
Correct.
And you talked about the recent equipment, rather than buying it or owning it, and this would cover those two?
Yes.
And you're confident that what they value it at, it will be a true value?
Yes, they replace it with, or the replacement is of the one that you have, so if it's a Generation 6, that's the most current iPad out, then that's what they value it at, what the cost of a Generation 6 is at the time, so yes.
It's pretty much strictly an age, but, you know, even though I'm gonna be able to buy a Generation 6, replace it, but, yeah, but that's fair, I mean, if the parents are gonna, if this is a parent's as an option, then we, I accept it, it's, this is what we'll take.
The screen cracking, how does that...
They are giving the parents anything except for information, I mean, I just want to make that clear.
We have a recommendation, a recommendation for the school district, or option, you know, they could go get iPad insurance anyplace else, we're just providing it there.
Almost like, I know, but photos, they can go and get photos.
We could go to 100 different places, just because we said that, you know, here we found some car insurance. Okay, well, with that in mind, then should there be an incentive for the school board to endorse a plan, should they be? We're, we're not asking you to endorse, we're just...
It's just FYI.
This is just saying, this is what we're gonna do. No, this, they don't have to do anything.
That we're offering this, that we've researched various companies, and this appears to be the one with the best benefits, and that we're just gonna say here's a...
We're not gonna prove it, we're in your dis... You're not spending any money on it. It's kind of like, it's kind of like the vaccine thing, you know, we put on their, this is what the health department wants, we're not endorsing it, you figured out, we're just providing some information. We're just gonna allow it, be given out. If we endorse it, and then something, and the insurance company doesn't do what we're supposed to do, then it can be on the bill, so we're not endorsing it. So shouldn't we be giving them some other options and... Yeah, we figure out other options, it's just, this is just strictly informational, here we found a place that doesn't, we know it, go check it out, go check it out on your own, no representation or warranty.
And I think what we've found over the years is that this would allow us that conversation to say to parents, "Well, we did give you an opportunity, you know, or we gave you information, if you were interested in purchasing some insurance," when they say, "Well, I lost a $300 iPad," and that's where we haven't had that option, we haven't had something to say, "You can go and do that," this would give that, us that.
So I would like to say this, is we're not endorsing it, I would like to say whatever information goes out to parents, that they are aware that there are other options that they have, this is, this is an option. I talked to Ms. Androski about putting something like that, and saying, "We're not endorsing the product, we are representing the loan," and everything else. And then other insurance companies may, other insurance options may be available to you.
Caviar.
Yeah, caviar.
But, I mean, we...
There wasn't a lot of marketing for it for a long time, there was no marketing for it, and we kept searching for that, and we finally came up with something. This isn't like it's a, there's gonna be 100 providers out there, like the Rival, or Orange, or something, this is not, you're not gonna, they're not gonna find a lot of options for this, and this is a good cost effective option.
And, and there are a lot of choices, I mean, you can buy, get your photos from somebody else for your school year, especially through your senior year, it doesn't mean you have to use school tax, and I don't think we warranty those types of things either, so I think there's, it to me falls into that, I just think us having something that we can point parents to, and say, "This is at least an option for you," is a lot farther than where we are today. It, so, and, but I, screen, cracked screens are always, you know, probably the, the reality, so do they, are they gonna give a check that then we, we can get for that, or are they, I'm wondering, because I know we're repairing a lot of those now, I think it's...
They're dealing with the parent, they're gonna pay the parent, we're, our relationship with the parent.
But we, so will we just collect, I'm saying, from the parent that?
We're collecting it from you, whether you have insurance or not, you owe us $100 for the screen.
And so that, and that's what I was just gonna say, so I think that goes back to that question, though, if, if, what are they paying us then for the screen, and I think that's what Mr. Dodd's saying, does it cover what we are saying that we would have charged?
And that's what Kathy checked, to make sure that they're comparable to what we're paying.
So the company, when the parent goes in and files a claim, I, I did check, and I believe you checked again recently, the iPad, you know, we have, we go through the then, the big process to have an iPad repair person, that company can repair the iPad for the parent or student, and then security pays the repair company. So they make sure it gets repaired, because really, that's what we're after, is making sure that the cracked screen is repaired, so if, if they'd rather that we...
We have parents do that now, they take it through, after they get it repaired themselves, doesn't matter to us, unless it's just going back to work behind the screen.
And are we, I don't, I couldn't recall, I thought we were doing some of those repairs?
Yes, we have started the process of that, we had a, more than we can handle in-house right now, just, and we could, in the timeframe to get them out into the school, so we did send them off to our vendors, so that we're ready for the new school year, but yes, we have begun the process of repairing cracked screens and ports and things ourselves.
So would that change any of this process, if that's a claim, will we, will it always be the outside vendor then that does them if it's, if it's from... Will we, will it always be the outside vendor then that does them if it's, if it's from this?
We do have the option to repair them ourselves and then they would send us some parts.
So they would send, would they send the bill then to you or the payment to you?
They, yes, the company would.
Company would.
I told Lance, I'd rather not get into that right now, I'd rather...
No, I understand, but that's what I think was the que, that was to me, that part process of, so, so there's some options.
We do have options. I just felt like, for now, if, if you have insurance, you're a parent and the screen is cracked, then you use the vendor to have it repaired. And then for the families that do not have it, we'll, we'll work in-house to repair those.
And for what it's worth, I actually had to go through a claim this last year with a similar company with my son, who was shocked how fast and seamless it was. I thought I would have to provide all kinds of stuff. And there was, there was a couple, it was actually pretty straightforward for...
That was a college thing?
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, these are, these are becoming very popular in colleges and, so I'm excited about it.
And I do wanna reiterate, even if we repair it in-house, like Mr. Mullin said, the family is still responsible for the price of the cracked screen repair.
Mr. Chairman, I had a question that I was gonna bring up in my school deal and school members, but since Ms. Androsky's here, is that you already know?
Go right ahead.
On the citrus.k12.us website, I know it was there for a while, and I, I heard some information that, you know, that's, that's out of our control, like, thinking. So what's the update on that? Just, because that's the website I tell people to go to. I know we have the citrusschools.org on the list, too. Like, can you just give us an update on that real quick?
Well, apparently the state decided to upgrade some servers and they, they missed a bunch of zones in the DNS resolution. So we ended up finally getting in contact with someone and let them know that we were having issues and they were able to get it straightened out and get us, get us fixed. Because we, we have no control of that, I mean, we can't even put a security script to the, so, to protection of the web, so...
We weren't the only district impacted either. We would spot check and see how it was going with other districts. For about five days, we, we couldn't figure out what the problem was. And then I happened to reach out to somebody in Leon County and then they said, oh, this is what we did to fix it. And then I said, Lance, can you contact this gentleman?
Yeah, let's take care of it by my side.
And I, I wanna commend Ms. Androsky and Mr. Fletcher. Poor Mr. Fletcher was getting my emails on the weekend, late at night. He does, because I was like, Lance, it's not going through on the citrus.k12. And, and your entire team had to relocate servers, particularly for Skyward, because we had teachers coming back, schedules were trying to get out and people couldn't access Skyward because it was on that server. And your team did an amazing job at trying to relocate that.
Well, and the very unfortunate part of this is during this week, and it took a week to have it resolved, is that we were asking families to go in and complete their emergency form. Families were also going in to find out what school they resigned for or what their bus would be for their child. And those were relying upon the citrus.k12. So it was, I know, very frustrating for the families and for that, we're sorry, we definitely are sorry.
But we have started, we're trying to move away from the citrus.k12 just for this reason, but we are actually moving Skyward over to citrusschools.org. So something really just happens in the future, it won't be a cheat.
And I think, because I've been like Mr. Dodd, for years I've given the citrus.k12. dot fl dot e, dot, dot US. The trouble is, is that that's, it's not entirely sunsetting, but it isn't the primary. I've also found that there's a lot of places, like if I log in on my phone to try and set it up, it defaults back to that as part of a replying email address in the system. And so that may need to be something that's corrected, too, is, is that default reply, because that's what causes the things, when I would send them out, I can send it directly using the other email address. But maybe as the board, too, you might, because they, everyone here may not know that they have a, another email address that's, that will all, it's the same, goes to the same box.
I found it out that week, too, I didn't know who I was.
And that, that's, that, that is a challenge, but I, I do commend you guys because it was a lot of, a lot of...
I just thought that if you figured out separately, I'd be happy to help.
Something, too, is there's a lot of incentives for educators that necessitate using that k12 dot fl dot US as a verifying email. I mean, like, if you're trying to get a cellphone, if you need an educator discount, you can't use the org as a verifier. So that, that's a, that's a challenge we have. I mean, who would know? Or think that, but, you know, it's become such a standard.
I think the five percent teachers, so if, you know, the teacher's name is official, if you just tried that as an asset, I would have thought across the state, it's pretty well-known.
Okay, any other questions, Gordon? Is there any other input you needed from us on this?
No, we just wanted to share the information, thank you for your time today.
And Ms. Brodcha, thank you, I know you've been working with them and answering some of those questions. Okay, and we're moving on to approval of disposal of active surplus properties.
As we get into that, there was an item on here, Mr. Dodd called off, uh, a little research, uh, that was posted on the list, so we're gonna pull it, that's why we're seeing it.
Thank you, Mr. Dodd.
It was an old driving simulator that they used for driver's ed, but driver's ed no longer uses it. Instead of surplusing it, Air Force OGC is going to use it to convert it into a flight sim.
Oh, that's excellent.
It'll be, it'll still be in some other...
How do we approve the disposal of active surplus property?
Motion by Ms. Bryant, second by Mr. Dodd, to approve the disposal of active surplus properties. Any more questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries forward. Oh, you can stay up there.
Oh, I can.
No, you're good.
Yeah. All right, so I met with you a couple weeks ago and you voted on the tentative budget. So we have firmly been working to work on the carryovers and the final expenditures, the final bringing in money still was coming in for the end of, of last year, money that's attributable to that billing out, everybody who needed the bill to bring in revenue. And so we've been working on that and waiting for the state to send down, actually the state sent down the CO and DS entries the same weekend that they did their change. And I emailed Lance and I said, why is the DOE website blocked by IBOSS? And it really wasn't us, it was the DOE. But waiting for things like that to get in. So right now in the process, we're preparing the budget book and the annual report and those will come to you on September 11th. You will have copies of the budget book and the annual report the Friday before September 10th, which I think is 6, September 6, September 7, whatever that Friday is before the next board meeting, you'll have those. I will have hard copies for those of you that want hard copies and I will email copies to all of you also. So those will be available and you'll be voting on that. And so that's where we're at right now. HR pushed over their last and final budget push, pretty much the most, you know, secure one we have at the time before school started. So there wasn't a lot of changes and that's where we are right now. So on September 6 or 7, whatever that date is, you'll get your documents and you'll vote on them on September 10th. And that's where we're at. Any other questions? Okay, all right, have a good evening.
Mr. Bishop?
Yes.
Mr. Mullin?
Yes.
Mr. Dodd?
Yes, well, we're getting a lot of things accomplished.
Oh, you know what, I apologize, we can do the minutes.
Okay.
It's my fault.
That's fine.
It, approval of the minutes? Motion by Ms. Power, second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the minutes. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Any citizens, comments? And we'll have a last opportunity at 5:15. And, I'm sorry, Mr. Dodd, go right ahead.
Okay.
Just so we can stay...
Exciting times here, I grew up under way to school and Welcome Back program was wonderful and all the work that went into that program was just, you know, I think it sends a great message to our faculty members and the students, especially that Mr. Antonetti was a great speaker, I'm glad, I'm glad he stayed on that, that, from last year or so, thank you for that. Ms. Hemel, all the staff that was involved with making that program, such a great kickoff. You know, as we have these agenda, you know, there's a lot of things, we do a lot of, you know, we ask questions behind the scenes and everything. And one of the consent items, though, was the funding agreement for school safety funding with the county. And man, I tell you what, I'm so pleased that our county commission is continuing to fund our school safety. You know, one, one million, four hundred and forty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars we threw down in consent and that is a great part of our security and safety for students. We know that school safety is part, a part of this community and we never want to have it a bit, a bit happier or anyone on our campuses. We want kids to be safe and feel safe and protected, school, faculty members, and to and from school as well. So that funding and Ms. Hemel, I appreciate the work that you do behind the scenes with commissioners and with county administrator, because that is what allows us to have the security that we have in our schools. And even though we're funding the Guardian program 100%, we were able to make that training happen and to have school resource officers still there in place at every school. And that is, that is great for student safety and I really appreciate, I just wanted to make sure that was mentioned. The iPads, I know at my son's school, he got his iPad the first day, so thank you to Ms. Androsky and the, the staff there and the schools. I know there were several other schools that issued iPads in the first day. And I'm very impressed by that, I appreciate that. And the Stuff the Bus events were fantastic. And thank you to transportation, those bus drivers that were involved with that, getting out there in the community. And that was, I'm always impressed with our community's support with things like Stuff the Bus. The last thing I have is I leave after this meeting to drive down before our, if we're still in the commission meeting, we're meeting tomorrow and Thursday. And, you know, if there were anything for this board that you would like me to express or if there's ever anything that you would, you have questions about, you know, we're being a workshop is the perfect time, I guess, to do that, but I would certainly be willing to take anything that you all have to that meeting, that, you know, you know, the Safety Committee, you know, I have, I have an opportunity to give input and I value that input opportunity and the people that are on that Safety and Security Committee that we have here in the school district. And so there's a lot of work that's going on behind the scenes. And even in our shame session today, we talked about security matters and the rest, things that this board is making decisions on. So I think, you know, we're all a part of this, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Dodd.
I attended the Purple Heart Breakfast along with Mr. Mullin, Mr. Bishop, Dr. Heber. And it was quite a nice little breakfast. I love hearing on the, on the white table, where they call that, people that are lost. This one lady was just in tears and she really talked.
Gold star.
Gold star, thank you, gold star family. And this one lady, Ms. Henry, was very eloquent as she talked about her loss and the fact that her son is serving right now, so.
Ms. Dodd?
I was listening to both of y'all and I listened to other things that everyone here has said. And it, it has dawned on me, even how much we do outside, sitting here and voting on stuff like this. We are involved in about everything in the community and, and things that benefit the teachers big time, things that benefit the students. We don't just sit in a chair and vote on something that someone brings to us, we get out there and work and we work all the time. And I know, gosh, a couple weeks ago, when we were going to the different schools, just meeting, you know, the five, six in a row, as fast as you could go, you went to schools. And we were learning about them and what can we do to help. We're asking the parents, what can we do to help? And they tell us and we do it. And I just something today, so we had a call about something we need to repair at the school. It's repaired, they sent someone straight out, but, you know, you have to know about it to go to repair it. I, I'm just pleased with all of us, that we don't act like some politicians, politicians, and get elected and that sets the end. You know, we get elected and we just start working as hard as we can and as long as we can. So I appreciate all of you all, guys. Thank you, Ms. Bryant.
I'll do, Mr. Dodd's comment to the, to the county commissioners, because that memorandum was, I was pleased to see it in our packet and we probably shouldn't put it on the consent so just we could have discussed it and said thank you publicly for it.
They have, they have another place to go on the next board meeting.
Good, good, thanks, thank you. I did my first Value Adjustment Board meeting at the Tom and Angela Vick's office. Judge Lato was so kind and explained after we were through, she sat with me and showed me the whole site, which I looked at before, so she was very good. So enjoyed that and elected me vice chairman. Good, so we'll do that. But it was a nice meeting, made everybody, Mr. Dodd checked to make sure I was there. But I started, I started yesterday and this morning, I'm over at Rock Pressure, sticking little thing, stickies on, the little kids coming in from K8 cave and enjoy seeing some of my students that I had in my classroom, which were high school, bringing their children to our public schools and saying hi to get my hugs. But everything seems to be working and I have to compliment Principal Furness over at Rock Pressure, because before we let him leave the school, he made me sign off, honey, school is gone. And that went off, it was stupid. Pleased with a lot of the comments that the, what you see in my daughter's a teacher at the Central Mill and she had a, a great first day. And so I think we're off to a good start.
So great. I had a chance on Monday to visit a number of schools and just excitement everywhere. Ms. Bryant know, very well knows, I did my annual spend time with my wife in her classroom and I know others of you all, you know, are involved in, in doing things like that. So the, but, you know, I have to say again, I think the Calendar Committee did a great job giving those days ahead of the school year. Again, I, I felt like teachers were as prepared as they could be in so many ways. I don't think we could ever give them enough time, because they're always gonna, you know, wanna plan more and do more. But it, it certainly beats showing up one day and the next day the kids are coming in.
I've done the Calendar Committee and that was one thing that was not negotiable for all three of the groups that we were, those, that's what the teachers asked for and that was not negotiable for us to change or alter, even though we would like to see the state say change the date to, on the 10th, the moon will be on the 10th.
I, I agree.
School left here on Saturday.
I wanna share with you one of the coolest things that happened yesterday that, that I just think epitomizes the Citrus County school system. At La Canto Primary, the Parent Teacher Organization installed a new buddy bench. And this bench, it deserves this purpose. It's that students can go there and sit on the bench because they need a friend to play with or they wanted someone who would spend time with them. And on the first day of school, you can all see, the buddy bench had two students. Immediately, as the story goes, that person sat down and two students came right over. And I, I thought of Ms. Hemel, because I know Ms. Hemel, you make that speech all the time, how you worry and wanna make sure somebody graduates and has a friend. And I thought, man, that buddy bench is the right direction. We don't think sometimes of these things as safety and security, that is safety and security at work. It really is, because a child who has a friend like that is, is in a good mental place or has someone to talk to. So I just commend LPS. I know we do things like that all around our schools, but I just wanted to lift them up. We have a couple of things going on. One I wanted to just quickly share, had a great educational technology meeting, we met the week of planning and that was a very intense, a lot of stuff going on, one-to-one initiatives, window upgrades. initiatives, window upgrades, networking. Something that you're going to, you may hear about, Class Link, which is our single sign-on system. We all approved it. Really, we're working on it. And something you probably won't have to hear about, but it does impact our staff, is something called Tracket application. And this is an application that our technology aides and our specialists are using to take care of technology issues, know what they, you know, when someone has an issue and to address it. And then if they need to upgrade it, send it to TRC and have them address it. All of that can be done and it's monitored and it's followed up. So I'm encouraged to see how that develops in that particular system, you know, because it is a different. Mr. Dodd is probably aware of this, but there's been something that just, I don't think it's going to be a problem, but I think we need to keep it on our radar. I was at FHSAA appeals and a conversation was the South Florida, South Gulf Football Officials Association that has a huge dispute over pay. And today, and I don't know if Mr. Dodd, if you saw this, FHSAA revoked that, the organization. These are the officials that did the officiating for football games. The challenge is, and this is a difficulty in amateur sports all around the country, is we are struggling to find officials. And if anybody wants to volunteer time or they want to be a coach, please go be an official in some sport that you love because we need you. But the challenge is, this impacts play, it impacts our schools. So it, I commend FHSAA because that was, that wasn't an easy thing that they did, but they pretty much said, "We're not going to be held hostage." We have some things coming up that I want, if you put on your schedule, we have a legislative delegation session that's September 23rd from 2:00 to 4:00. I kind of put this pencil in already. This is, you know, as we know, this is when we talk to the delegation. It's not for today, but I would ask if you would start thinking about our board's platform or issues that we, you know, we talked about a few of them today, that we want to communicate with our delegation publicly. We may, you know, also have those sidebar conversations with them, but I think they're, you know, this is our opportunity to talk to them. So safety and security issues, if there's something that we can do. We talked about flexibility when it comes to dollars coming to us. These are some things that we may want to communicate along those lines.
Yes, so it's earlier this year, right? Because I think Ms. Keltz and I came back after December. Is that because of the election?
I think it's because of the election.
Correct. Okay.
Every other year this issue staying worried of this upcoming.
And so that typically will be for the chairman and are you talking, would you like us to be there or?
Well, right now, I honestly wanted us to be, to have that date so that we could start that conversation of things we'd like to include. Forest School Board Association is going to be meeting, I want to say it's August 22nd and I'll be heading over for that to begin our legislative platform. And so we'll want to see what comes out of that. If you recall, last year, Forest School Board Association took a very different approach to the legislative platform. It was less a laundry list of, "We want this" and more of a conversation of, "These are things that we believe we can improve the school system if we add flexibility, opportunity." And I think as a result, a lot of what we put in there, we can point back to legislation passing, which has not always been the case with FSBA the last number of years. So I think that approach is also good for us as a local board to communicate that. And this comes into this next piece. You may have seen the article that Commissioner Carneyan was looking to bring up, the Baker Acting Facility for Citrus County. I don't think I have to convince this board, we really need one in Citrus County for our young people. And that's something I think, it's not to say it's completely a legislative issue, but it does play a role and legislature was very good this year with our, with the superintendent's request for those elementary behavioral specialists that we've been able to get in there. Mental health, we've talked about is the crux. I believe that plays a huge role in safety and security. So I think, you know, Ms. Powers, if you think about some of those mental health things that we, you know, could start to incorporate, I think we need to put those and if we can come together and maybe, you know, start at the next workshop with that. Is there an interest by this board to send a letter of support to the board county commission regarding a Baker Act facility, you know, being in Citrus County, a screening facility? Because I know that's something we have, we have stated in different meetings, but I don't know if that's something, you know...
I think it's something that's been done, you know, the Baker Act, you know, something that's been accepted, it's like acres of...
I think we need to improve, thank you, there's many things that they think of us.
If you all, if you are, if you do give the board, the chair direction to do that, I have no problem putting that letter together and sending it. If you would send Ms. Lisa some of the things that you'd like us to thank and lift out to them and then I can incorporate that. Mr. Bradshaw, is that acceptable to do it that way? I want to make sure that we're doing the transparency correctly. So if they send, if you send that to Ms. Lisa and then we can be doing that. Mr. Dodd?
Yeah, no, I was just, I am all for having a Baker Act receiving facility in Citrus County. So I would be, we would like to do that. I think it's a good idea. And I think Commissioner Knorr too was a big part of that and maybe Commissioner Carney might know.
Oh, I'm in, I'm sorry. Thank you. Actually, nothing against Mr. Carney, but thank you for that.
With all the focus we have now on mental health in our schools, I mean, it would be a natural progression, I think, that we could have a facility with health resources availability for, so I think it'd be great. It's a great meeting for it.
And Mr. Dodd, if you would maybe send to Ms. Lisa, if you had any specific thoughts that we could include in that, because, you know, we can't write the letter together, but if you send some notes, then I can incorporate some of those notes in that. I think that's correct.
Yes.
And then, so that facility, I'm looking here, something I wanted to lift out was Ms. Hemel, wonderful job with the podcast. And Ms. Blair, you did a great job. If you haven't had a chance to listen to, sit down with the superintendent as the school year starts, there's a podcast, go to the website, go on social media and find it. I hope you do more of those. That was a great opportunity and...
I'm sorry. You're out.
Oh, was it video too?
No.
Oh, I was thinking, did I miss something? Because I, you know...
You didn't see it, did you?
Because there are video on one version.
I'm not here yet.
You know, you talked about, I think it was either Ms. Bryant brought up or Ms. Powers, so I apologize. But we talked about in when we were putting together the legislative platform, you know, we get a call. A lot of us get calls where we meet somebody at any event that we are, the grocery store, and a lot of people don't realize what happens next. There's an email, a phone call, some communication. And yes, that means sometimes it's on the weekend when, you know, Mr. Mullin will respond to an email that I've written. Dr. Hebert, Mr. Bishop, the superintendent regularly will be like, "I'm on it, we're taking care of it." That's, and we, I had an issue yesterday, I shouldn't say an issue, I had a communication with a couple of families yesterday when I was at an event. And by this morning, we had already started communications, but by mid-morning, the team was on it. That's local government. I'm concerned, this effort by the state to have the leadership of our school systems and our educational system being taken place at the state board level, when they're not seeing those parents, those teachers that we'll contact. I had, by the way, a great staff member yesterday that said, "Thank you. Please let the superintendent know how pleased I am with the leadership team at my school." And those are communications that you're not going to get very easily if you just talk to the state board of education about what's happening in their classroom. So we need to remind not just ourselves, but we also need to make sure we remind the public and our legislators, local government is the best operating system that we can have. And I think we just need to, you know, talk about those highlights of that. We still have actually 10 minutes, so anybody have anything else?
I'm sorry.
Sorry. No, no, go ahead. They got a mixture.
You, Alex, I've heard so much work, promise to serve them and them as a small world. You got to call them, ask them, see how you do it.
Yeah, so you, yeah.
But you really brought all of it together and that's a good job and very important job to do.
Thank you, Ms. Powers. We, I was at a swim meet, state swim meet over the summer and ran into, and I say this because this is what we serve, all of us do, that people don't get to. I ran into the vice president of the Forest School Association, who was there as well. And we just, we spent a couple of minutes just kind of comparing what's happening in each other's district. I was exhausted. There is so much that each district is taking on and doing. And it's an exciting time, but sometimes it's a little scary for us too.
Was that Laura Otero, did you say?
No, it was Chris. It was Chris. Chris Patricia.
Chris Patricia.
Yeah, Patricia. And, yeah, so it, but we, I think, you know, Forest School Board Association is going to have an exciting year, very excited about the leadership team and that it's going to really, you know, really is a good thing. And Ms. Bryant, you're going to be also, we're going to be at a workshop for Forest School Board for that.
Sure.
Ms. Kristen?
No, I just want to thank Dr. Mullin and the teachers and where the break so often led us to this. It's going to be a great one.
It's going to be a great one. We have about three minutes left, so have a kiss.
Family's like it.
And Ms. Powers, Ms. Powers went to theme parks the last, on her little break.
Loves.
And she loves theme parks. That, hey, that's what a real grandma Mimi does.
That's what she is. The grand is to leave Mark Harry Potter. And she loves Harry Potter. I do not like the horse and all, but I love my grandchildren, so I enjoy seeing their faces. It's good.
So I'll bring up another item again. I was very pleased that our criminal justice academy at WTC, Captain Kanter with the sheriff's office, though, they planned an active assailant training through the FLETC, Federal Law Enforcement Training Center from Glinta, Georgia. They did that last week and I think all of the SROs were there for it. It was, we forced school, timing wise, it was a little bit rough, but they were able to make it to a lot of their open houses on Friday because it was a four-day training. And that, to bring a program of that caliber here to Citrus County saved the county a lot of money because they didn't have to send all those officers to go into the river. So that staff came here and they were certified, they received certification through the FLETC, Federal Law Enforcement Training Center. So kudos to that group and that training focus with our school resource officers.
Excellent. And actually Buster's been busy covering us and thank you. You, I think, Buster, have you covered that SRO? I saw it somewhere, maybe it was on Facebook. You covered though, the article you did on the Guardians and that training. And I think Buster, you actually participated in that as well.
I did.
So if you got a chance to really experience what those Guardians were, how was you breathing?
Apparently Chief Grant said I sounded like Darth Vader. Yeah, I do honor the individuals who go through that sort of stuff on a regular basis. I could not find it in myself to do something like that.
At least you were breathing, so this is a good thing because I'm not sure I would have been so scared I held my breath.
I still think of the picture that La Canto had, we need to throw it up in those three, like four, five trips through and out in front of our other schools.
Buster, I believe, took that photo.
And I think you did take that picture. It was awesome.
That's, I think it was Matt Beck, very, very gifted photographer, has been for many many years.
Scary.
Monday, you got a nice picture of Principal Bossy. I saw that. I don't know if it made the print version, but I know I saw it online. It was just...
I played it from Rock Crusher, it was from World.
Oh, that was a great show too.
It was a great show. It was a gift, it was a gift of school, that, this, I'm hoping for this morning, so we can break these rules. We should do a fire. Happy day.
Is there anyone here wishing to come before the board? It is 5:15. No one here? Is there any reason we cannot adjourn? We are adjourned?